9:00 PM, I'd like to go ahead and call to order this regular meeting of City Council for Monday, August 22nd. If we can say the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Holly, will you call the roll, please?
Lanyon?
President.
Pratt?
Thank you.
Bellinger?
Here.
Ryan?
Here.
Gilroy?
Here.
Hanson?
Here. All right, I am looking for approval of our agenda this evening unless there are changes that need to be submitted.
Some move.
Thank you, do I have support?
Support.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Now we have an opportunity for audience participation with a maximum of five minutes per presentation if anybody would like to come forward. If you could state your name and address for our records, please.
Absolutely. Good evening, everyone. My name is Chris Corey. I'm from McKenna. Our office where I work is 124 East Holden Street in Grand Rapids. I just wanted to let you know I'm in for Raphael tonight, here to answer any questions regarding the conditional rezoning once that comes up on the agenda, and otherwise I'll let you get your agenda.
All right, thank you so much. Appreciate it. If there's nobody else that would like to come forward, we'll move right along. I have our council meeting minutes of August 8th. If there's no changes, I'm looking for approval for that.
Move, do we approve the council meeting minutes for August 8th?
Thank you so much, do I have support?
Support.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Now we have an opportunity for accounts payable. Noah, you had an opportunity to review this evening's packet.
Yes, I did, and I went through and everything matched accordingly, and I didn't have any outstanding questions on any of the individual items. So I'm gonna make a motion to approve check 75801 dated 8/11/22 through check 75830 dated 8/11/22, and ACH 294 through 297, and E, I think it's EFT 298, and a total of $88,358 of D6s.
Okay.
I'm gonna open the floor for any questions.
Anyone have any questions regarding accounts payable this evening? No? All right, I'm looking for support.
Certainly.
All right, thank you so much. Holly, will you call the roll, please?
Bellinger?
Yes.
Ryan's?
Yes.
Gilroy?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Lanyon?
Yes.
Pratt?
Yes.
All right, moving right along, we've got a couple of action items this evening. The first is our first reading of an ordinance amendment for conditional rezoning of 502 East Grand River. So I'll go ahead and turn this right over to our city manager, John Henneman.
Thank you, Mayor Gilroy, members of council. So this item has been winding its way through the process for a couple of months now on this summer. What's in front of you tonight is the first reading of amendment to the zoning ordinance to allow conditional rezoning for the subject parcel 502 East Grand River. As Mr. Corey said, he's here from McKenna to answer any questions they may have about the process or what you're approving tonight, and also the ordinance, the first draft, and then there's a draft agreement that goes with this that ultimately council would enter into if this is approved. Mr. Brown put that together for us as well. So basically, the subject parcel is located in a C3 mixed business district. The planning commission did recommend approval of the applicant's request for conditional rezoning, and as part of the process, that conditional rezoning has to be approved by this board. The subject parcel did request a variance at zoning order appeals for a dimensional variance from 100 feet to about 70 feet, 75 feet, and that was granted by the ZBA, and so that leads us to this meeting tonight. Also along the process, planning commission did grant a special land use for retail sales on the site, and that's, all of these are contingent upon one another. So I recognize it's kind of a planning house of cards, if you will.
Right.
But it's been making way, it's made through the process. The applicant is here, Mr. Brand, so he's also here to answer any questions he may have.
Great, thank you so much. And I know that, Dan, you are on ZBA, any comments regarding the discussion that happened with that request for the variance?
We had no real issues with granting this variance. It was a variance of 30 feet because of lot width, and the applicant, the property actually exceeds the maximum square footage of going to the zoning that he's requesting, so it was just that one narrowest portion of the lot that wasn't wide enough to meet the lot width to go. So we did not have an issue with that because of exceeding the maximum square footage.
Okay. And I know the planning commission had healthy discussions regarding this too, Brandon, any comments you want to share from that?
No, I mean, we did a contingent on ZBA making their approval, but in short, I mean, it's running alongside with businesses that have run there in the past and similar uses prior, but this is just a kind of a technical change that we need to make sure that it's meeting what the desired use is, so we don't really have anything specific that concerns about.
All right, thank you so much. Mr. Brand, thank you for being here this evening. It looks like everything is making its way through the proper channels and paces, so pleased with that. Does anyone have any questions?
Tim, did you see anything in here that concerned you?
No.
Thank you.
It's just the other process here. The planning commission did recommend the conditional rezoning conditioned on the variance, and of course, city council approval. Tonight is the first reading because what we're doing is amending the zoning ordinance map to change this lot from C3 to C2 conditional rezoning, subject to the specific conditions that are set forth in the application. So tonight's just the first reading. At your next meeting, you would pick up the second reading and make it official, and at that time also, you would approve entering into the conditional rezoning agreement. There's a draft here, it's in pretty good shape. It needs the Exhibit A, which would be the application as an attachment.
Okay, excellent.
Thank you, Tim.
Thank you, Tim, appreciate that. Yes, Noah?
Was there any additional comments or letters sent to City Council regarding the property structural or anything? Do they have any concerns?
Go ahead, John.
We did have a couple of folks come to the planning commission to the public hearing because there was a special land use. Properties within 300 feet of the subject property were notified by mail, and so we had a couple of people spoke and asked some questions about that.
We had a few people come to ZBA, a couple of the neighbors, but the, my impression of ZBA, I can't speak to who was that planning commission, I wasn't there. Most of the things that were expressed at ZBA would apply to any commercial entity going in there, not specific to this project. It was an objection that would be to any usage.
And we know that Grand River is our commercial corridor, it's been that for many, many years, and so, you know.
Well, I'll comment that, sorry, Tim.
No.
I just was going to say that a lot of the comments that both the planning commission and the ZBA really were directed more to the prospective site plan, not so much about the special land use per se or the variance. They were mainly concerned of what's gonna happen on there with regard to the actual plan, with lighting and buffering and things like that, and none of that was actually before them at that time.
Okay, excellent, all right. Okay, great.
Thanks for the update.
Yeah.
As the deputy on the council, I'm surprised that it takes an ordinance, which is to say a law, right? It takes a law to change the zoning map, is that what I'm seeing?
Yes, because it is an ordinance.
Correct.
You have to amend an ordinance to change it.
And each of our zoning, they have different definitions, so C1, C2, C3, so that's what's happening, is we're changing that C3 to meet the conditions of C2. It's no different than our residential that is out there too, we have different definitions of residential zoning, so that's why it takes all of this.
So zoning changes are not a small thing?
No, they're not.
Big deal.
No, all right.
Got it.
If there's no other questions or discussion, I am looking for the requested action, please.
I'll make a motion to complete first reading of the zoning ordinance to the city of Williamson, hereby amended to modify Section 74-2.102 thereof. Being the zoning map, the city of Williamson has filed a parcel property located at 502 East Grand River Avenue, Williamson, Michigan, parcel ID number 33-18-03-36-378-001, previously classified as a C3 mixed business district. Upon entry into a conditional rezoning agreement, is conditionally rezoned as C2 federal business district.
Thank you so much, I appreciate that.
Second.
Thank you, Tom. If there's no further discussion, Holly, will you call the roll, please?
Bellinger?
Yes.
Ryan's?
Yes.
Gilroy?
Yes.
Lanyon?
Yes.
Pratt?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Excellent. Well, it looks like this will just keep moving forward smoothly, I hope, so our second reading will be at our next council meeting, and so, Mr. Brand, thank you so much for being here. We didn't have any questions, but we look forward, you know, again, for this to keep moving forward.
If there are no more hiccups, when might this place open up?
Well, I don't know how much further the process is going to go. It's been a lot longer than what I anticipated when I started the ball rolling, so I guess you guys tell me when we're gonna be down.
We'll just, you can come into our meetings, we'll make sure that we keep moving this along for you.
Get things rolling, so.
Josh?
What sort of plan?
Couple things, so the second reading would be at the next meeting, which is September 12th, and then the ordinance goes into effect 15 days after that, after it's published. But the last piece of the puzzle is the actual site plan.
Right, so there's still a little bit more work to do.
And it's not a huge site, so as long as Mr. Brand is, he's shown nothing but good faith in working towards all the steps in the process today, so as long as we can work out the site plan issues like buffers and lighting and things like that, then it should be, I would anticipate approval at the first meeting in October.
So those are all planning commission type things?
Yep.
Correct.
Excellent. All right, moving along, we have our Memorial Park Design Engineering Contract Landscape Architects and Planners, Inc., so we have that in front of us. John, I'll go ahead and turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mayor Gilroy, members of council. Just, I guess, a little bit of history for all of us. This project, the start of it predates me by, I think, a couple of years, and the concept plan was actually submitted to Ingham County for a grant for the design engineering piece, and that was awarded by the county, I think, almost a year and a half ago. So what you have in front of you is the Memorial Park Design Engineering Contract with Landscape Architects and Planners, also known as LAP, and it's for the design and engineering services only. As you know, this concept's been talked about for a number of years. It's also, the Parks Committee did discuss this in some detail and did adopt a motion recommending council approval.
Excellent.
Here it is in front of you, as I said, it's grant funded, the grant, total grant amount's around $40,000, and the request for tonight is not to exceed $34,780. In their scope of work, they did include a number of things, like Items 5, 6, and 7, should this project ultimately move forward. Those are not being asked for approval for tonight because we're not there, and the design estimate, there's a preliminary design estimate, and it obviously has to be updated because it is dated for a couple of years, but the total amount of this project would be between $450,000 and $500,000, and the discussion all along has been that this would be a grant-funded project, and there's a number of different grant programs. There's Ingham County program, there's the Natural Resources Trust Fund program, all programs that I'm familiar with and have been successful in the past.
Excellent. And I see we have Kent Hall here, thank you so much for your diligent work to get this park moving forward.
Could I?
Yes, absolutely.
Speak, Don.
Yep, go ahead.
Kent Hall, 509 Rose Cedar Boulevard. Actually, March 14, 2016, the council approved the basic concept of this, so that's when it actually was, you know, kind of talked about to the point where we thought we could get things going. The Heavy Equipment Operators Union, 324, 326, whatever it is and how, they're still on board, I just talked to them recently, about coming up with a bunch of men and equipment to do the initial excavating as a training session, so a little bit of charge there. There would be a value to that as far as maybe matching some of their grants, so hopefully looking like this is really coming through.
Excellent, yes. Wonderful work, and it'll be an exciting day when this project is complete, and I hope that we are all here for that. Yes, go ahead, Tom.
I'm just curious, if we go through and, you know, do this design and engineering contract, and then, you know, we get the ball rolling and there's gonna be some time in between putting things together and reaching out for grants, is there any expiration on this, or is this, once it's done, it's good to go for, until we can say, go ahead with the project?
Sure.
Kind of wondering the same thing.
Yep, that's a good question.
Without the funding on the back end, how far do we want to go there?
So that's an excellent question and observation, and when you're trying to get in the queue for either the county for larger grant amounts or for the Natural Resources Trust Fund grants, you need that level of detail.
Yep.
The rendering is great, sufficient, they don't, the state of Michigan doesn't ask for construction drawings per se, so we're not asking for that, but they do ask for a very detailed, itemized pro forma on not only just the construction, but also if there's any future maintenance, and then there's narratives on both those things, like how method of construction, are you or aren't you in a flood plane, and some of this is, so all of those things have to be considered.
So with this, with this design?
Yep.
I guess that's what we're asking.
Yeah.
Would there be an expiration? Once this moves forward, once that design is done and created by LAP and all of the i's are dotted, t's are crossed, does that have an expiration?
No, and that's, I give you a very, you know, bureaucratic city manager answer to not answer your question, so sorry about that.
No, that's okay.
There's no expiration, and frankly, almost every project that I've worked on of this nature, there's always some tweaking, because there's something, you get into the construction, it's like, wow, like, just for example, maybe we don't want to have the path go across the two islands. I'm not saying that we, I mean, we would like to do that, but maybe that's something that, a value engineering that we have to change.
Okay.
But what this does is it gives us a great idea of, you know, construction costs.
That base.
Yeah.
Excellent.
It's the starting point.
Okay, Tim.
I'm looking at this, and I just was wondering about the actual location because the proposal that the cop says, Cutnam West to Grand River Avenue East, and then on top of Page 3, it talks about the South Bank of the North Cedar between Highland Street West and Grand River Avenue East.
Okay.
Again, the South Bank, and then they've got alignment Highland Street to the elementary school, the pedestrian bridge crossing and connecting to Grand River near Eagles Lodge. And then the Honor for All, is that, isn't that on the north side of the river?
Yes, it would be, yeah, the Honor for All, yeah.
Well, that's where I was wondering if, if this is restrictive in what they're doing, or maybe I'm reading it too technically here, just on that. And the other thing that caught my attention was anticipated additional services for easement acquisition, and the question is whether this will require some acquisitions.
Right.
It does mention in the, as you read through, that there's one piece of property that eventually, and they talk about whether the city would want to use them to acquire that easement, or if the city would want to do that themselves, but it mentions that there's one small piece of property that there would be a.
Yes, John.
So if you look at, conveniently, LAP puts their logo on their concept, and so the visual is what we're reviewing tonight. I recognize that the proposal they submitted is, maybe it's a little bit more broad in scope at this point, but what they're approving is a design and engineering for what's basically this rendering.
Okay.
And it does contemplate some of those other things, like, because again, the question is, if you look down at the north where the Compass Rose is, we all know that the bridge is there down by the Eagles, and so where does this trail go? I mean, that's part of it, and there's a sliver, you know, the easement part that's contemplated is that sliver right by that turnaround, but everything else on this plan, on this concept is on city property.
Okay.
But yeah, we're not asking them to do easement review or acquisition.
Okay, all right.
We may or may not do that, I mean, that's something that, you know, between Mr. Brown and myself, we could do that, we've done that already since I've been here.
Okay. All right, well, with that being said, are there any other questions or discussion? Okay, I'm looking for the motion, please, for requested action.
Make a motion to approve Memorial Park Design Engineering Contract with LAP, Planning Engineering Services for Non-Motorized Pathway in Memorial Park, which was drawn.
Thank you so much, Terry. Do I have support?
Second.
Thank you, Dan. If there's no other questions or further discussion, Holly, will you call the roll, please?
Ryan's?
Yes.
Gilroy?
Yes.
Lanyon?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Pratt?
Yes.
Bellinger?
Yes.
All right, our next action item is appointment of Brooke Donnelly, help me out, somebody, Preslock?
Rayly.
Rayly, to the Downtown Development Authority for a term to expire 6/30 of 2026.
So moved.
Thank you, do I have support? Thank you. If there's no other further discussion, Holly, will you call the roll, please?
Ryan's?
Yes.
Gilroy?
Yes.
Lanyon?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Pratt?
Yes.
Bellinger?
Yes.
All right, our last action item for this evening is our Zimmer Road Mechanic Street lift stations. I see we have the memo here from John and some information from Scott, so I'll go ahead and turn this over.
Thank you, members of council, Mayor Gilroy. The Zimmer Road Mechanic Lift Stations, the actual construction projects are budgeted for in the current budget year that we're in, and Scott did a really, really fantastic job of laying out the detail and the need, and, you know, one of the, I guess, the most telling photos is this one where there's a lift station in there somewhere, so, and so we can change the flow of the river when it's flooding, thus that's our lift stations are watertight.
Excellent.
So Spicer did provide a proposal for the work, it's certainly within the realm of an appropriate percentage for engineering for a construction project of this size, and just asking that council approve the engineering services contract for Zimmer Road Rehab and Mechanic Lift Street modifications, and the amount not to exceed $59,600.
Okay. My question would be, if this moves forward with approval, when would we see this work happen?
I think the, so the design, small amount of design would take place, and then they'd be good out over the winter, and it would be shortly after the weather turns better.
Okay, springtime.
Yeah, definitely in this current fiscal year that we're in.
Okay, excellent, thank you.
And this is just the Zimmer Road, not the Mechanic?
It's for both, it's engineering and engineering services for both Zimmer and Mechanic.
This number on here would be not the 262, but the 596.
Yes.
That's for both. Got it.
Correct, the engineering side, yep.
Okay, excellent. Any other questions or discussion?
So is the follow-up to that with the total figure on this page just?
Very large number.
Yeah, is that what we're looking at in the future then?
Yeah, after the bid, after the bid.
Got you.
Okay.
And that's one thing I do want to point, this can be a project that is competitive in price, at least, not necessarily full-blown bid process, but we will have competitive goals for it.
Okay, excellent. All right, I'm looking for the requested action, please.
Make a motion for approval for the engineering services contract for the Zimmer Road Lift Station, rehabilitation and Mechanic Street Lift Station modifications, and the amount not to exceed $59,600 from Spicer Group.
Thank you so much. Do I have support?
Support.
Thank you very much, Noah. If there's no other discussion, Holly, will you call the roll, please?
Gilroy?
Yes.
Lanyon?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Pratt?
Yes.
Bellinger?
Yes.
Ryan's?
Yes.
Excellent, thank you so much all for moving those action items forward. Moving along on our agenda, we have discussion items of the road diet, are there any updates for that, John?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Gilroy, members of council, just a couple of quick things. Mr. DeBries and I have had a couple of different discussions with MDOT, with their planning groups. They did have some promotions, some retirements and some promotions, so the rosters changed a little there, so we anticipate having our first meeting with them either the week of the 29th or the week of Labor Day, and our preliminary discussions is they don't think that we have to update the traffic counts for M43, which would be good, because again, it is a state road, and so based on that, we'd be able to go right into the modeling and, you know, speed the process up by about a month or so.
Excellent, great, thank you so much for the update, I appreciate it.
Good question on the road diet thing, where would the, we're gonna shift from four lanes to these directions to three lanes, one each direction, left turn in the middle. Where would that start on the east end of town, and where would it start on the west end?
That is the, that's the $64 question, is like, where exactly that starts, because heading, all the work that's taking place on Grand River heading towards Oakham is, if you notice, a lot of that has changed from four to three, and so the question is, it's really, it's really MDOT thing, so I would say that's to be determined.
Getting out of DNW could be interesting.
Yeah, right.
If it comes back that far.
I would have to think you'd have to have a gradual lead-up to it. My thoughts have always been that it would start somewhere between the car wash and DNW, or the old car wash, the new kayak launch property, so that would, you know, be my thought, same out here, gradual, you know, probably near Sitco or near Mr. Brand's property, so I guess that, who makes that determination if we don't do traffic counts and where we start? MDOT?
I mean, if I remember correctly, and it's been a few years since we started this, it was pre-COVID when we started talking about this, but, and that was a part of the big discussion with MDOT, but, and I'm reaching back a few years, I remember talking about that the paint could be changed as far back as like city limits.
Yeah.
Not that there would be some changes, so it's like, it's where that's gonna be, but it won't be, I would assume DNW, that turnout at DNW would affect.
Because wasn't there a discussion point of that too, that because we were putting the crosswalk in right there by the apartments, that that's kind of where it would start, the taper, so even, you know, maybe right there.
And correspondingly, on North Putnam and South Putnam, we're thinking about doing the same thing, adding a left turn lane. Where would that start, like one block each direction sort of?
Well, currently, that road is, one, not exactly, a two-lane road, so.
Technically, it's not four-lane.
And it's already wide enough, right?
Right.
So that one's pretty easy.
So South Putnam in front of the hardware store and fireworks glass through, you know, that area unfortunately would lose a few parking spaces because that would become a lane of traffic, whereas on North Putnam coming, coming south.
Basically, the light.
The road is, there's, the paint is not on the road there for a second, but it's already wide enough for two lanes, so that's why you see people pull up there to turn right.
Sneak.
Accommodate that on the other side, you have to remove some of those parking.
We can't lose any parking spots in North Putnam because there aren't any parking spots.
Well, and since we started this process, we added additional parking in that ZBA parking line, we redid that, so it won't be, this has been a longer process than it was.
Yes, yeah.
But because at the time, we were talking, this, even though we'll lose some, it's a net gain.
Yeah, and we're also getting all the new additional spots down at the kayak launch, you know, even though it's a little bit farther walk downtown, we are increasing our number of.
Okay, so for Putnam, that's one block in each direction?
Possibly, possibly. We don't know this for certain until, until that tells us.
I agree.
Yeah, that's why it's that question, but good conversation.
Just kind of like a final thought, and this is by accident, when I was visiting my in-laws, they live in the hole, and South Cedar, right before Hole Road, is transformed quite a bit, you know, I've been hanging around that family since the 80s, so it's changed, and it gives you a really good context of like how much they can really enhance pedestrian, And if, it gives you a really good context of like how much it can really enhance pedestrian. And then traffic still moves.
Yes, it is.
It still moves on South Cedar, but it's right, right near South Cedar and Whole Road, where that comes together, they've added a lot of, there are some cross islands on the street, it's a little different condition there, but they've also done things on the, on the, on the tree lawn, so there's like a consistent looking feel all the way down there. So if you're on that part, you know.
It does, it looks very nice.
It drives through that, it drives through that, it gives you some, so, I guess, some design context of it.
I've driven through that a lot of times, I think that's a good example of what we could, we could look at. I hope so, yeah.
Well, we will keep having this conversation as we keep moving towards, you know, completing this project. All right, moving along, correspondence received, we have our notice from Consumers Energy, I know we talked about that a little bit. If you do have questions, reach out to, to John, and I'm sure he can answer them for us. Moving along, we've got our department head report, so I'll go right to John.
Only thing I have to report is, I'm happy to announce that our, our new treasurer, Mr. Tom Mead, will start the week of September twelfth. Tom was the treasurer here right before Rachel came on board. And he, he was assistant treasurer before he came here, and he was very happy he was here during his time, but just because of his family situation, he took a job closer to home, but he's been a treasurer in the city of Albion for about the last twelve years. So we're going to very experienced individual, a lot of the current staff had worked with him before, spoke very highly of him, so. And we did have, we had three really, really very qualified candidates, and we had two that were, we had no, would have no hesitation with offering a job to him, so. So Tom's through the process, the background and all those things, and he'll be ready to hit the ground running.
Excellent, great, well, it's great to have him come back, and he has familiarity, and sounds like staff knows him, so that's, that's excellent.
What's the, what's the population of Albion compared to here?
I think Albion's about ten thousand.
Ten thousand, so it's a little bit larger, a little bigger budget.
Yeah. Yeah, real, just real quick, I just wanted to say good luck in advance to Mr. Lanyan. This is the meeting cycle, it's the last, the meeting of the eighth was my youngest kid's birthday, and my, my middle kid, his birthday is tomorrow, so you kind of missed the Hannah fan birthday pool, but you got a more chance today, so good luck to him, thank you.
Yes, we're excited for you, Brandon, and can't wait for you to give us that update for the whole Lanyan family. Yeah, excellent. Thank you, John. Moving right along, we've got Chief here.
Good evening, thank you. Well, I guess our most exciting news of the day is today was the first day of school. And I guess the best way to classify it was organized chaos.
Yes, I'm sure.
All those excited parents trying to get their kids in there, so there's a lot of traffic and a lot of new parents, so it's a little bit of work trying to get them where we want them to go.
Sure.
I just recommend that they take a look at the, our Facebook.
Yes.
Our admin put some stuff on there to try to help out a little bit.
Yes.
The biggest thing is try not to block residents' driveways, we've gotten several complaints about that. But yeah, no, it was a lot of fun seeing a lot of the kids and how big they're getting, and so that was very exciting, so.
Excellent.
That was fun.
How many crossing guards do you have for this school year?
We are, we have three active.
Okay.
The one down by the elementary school by Highland, Amber Riverside, the one up on Church and Highland, and then we've got another one down at Bonetta and.
Excellent.
Church.
Okay.
Then I've got an extra one on the bench, if anyone, anytime anybody's.
Excellent. Well, I, I, I hope the rest of this week goes smoothly. It is an education for the parents that are doing the drop-offs and everything, so I hope that everybody has a lot of pace and, and grace, patience and grace.
Absolutely.
As we go through this, but, but that is a big concern for our Riverside residents out there that, you know, I'll, I'll put my plug in here too, to please be mindful when you're driving through for drop-off and pickup, and remember that those residents do need to get out of their driveways and go to their jobs, or come home from their jobs, or move their family around in some way, shape or form. So, you know, it is the first day, and appreciate all that you and everybody do over there, and look forward to getting some more feedback that it's running smoothly as it keeps going.
And be patient and graceful to me.
Yes.
There's one of me and five hundred plus of them, so.
Yes, yes.
Sometimes it's a little overwhelming, and, you know, sometimes I make it a little short, but I try not to, and I apologize in advance.
Well, I think, I think we can only keep improving from today.
So with that being said, just, you know, just a note, you know, just be cautious, there are a lot more students out there, a lot more pedestrians, a lot more bicycles, so please be looking for those folks. Slow your speeds down in, in the residential areas. Speaking of speeds, I've had some complaints about speed on South Putnam, so I've been down there doing some work, and I got one at fifty-one and a twenty-six the other day. So that's more than double the speed limit. And that same day, there were little girls riding their bikes and stuff like that, so, so please use caution, and just be aware that that speed doesn't change until Industrial Park, to go to a thirty-five. I mentioned last time that we were doing some training, we did do the alert training, which stands for the Advanced Law Enforcement Rapid Response Training in the schools, so we did it here in our schools. That's a national initiative, which is through the University of Texas and the FBI Training Center. So all law enforcement's training on the same page, so everybody's doing it the same. So if somebody shows up here, we're all at the same training, same mindset.
Great.
So that really went really well for us, and we took it extremely serious, I mean, it's extremely serious training, and so, yeah, we were good to get that under our belt in a training environment versus if we have to respond in a real environment. Later in this, the fall, we'll be training with LPD sponsoring another, several training courses, so I'll be sending a few of the officers through that. Two of our officers are instructors, so they've been asked to come teach at that. So we'll be doing that as well. Detective Pinter, I attended a tactical combat training up in West Branch last week, I think I mentioned that. It was a free training put on by the federal government, it was a very, very good training. It gave us the skills to not only help, you know, ourselves, but say, we do respond to a shooting, we are very proficient at putting tourniquets on, stopping bleeding, we've got the equipment they gave us, first aid kits, you know, individual first aid kits with light clotting equipment. So it was, it was really good training, and so we're teaching our guys that, and hoping to get some more of those first aid equipment to equip all those guys with. As far as our activity for the past month, the drunk drivings were down, we only had three, so that's a good. I know the guys are still out there working hard. We get several assists to other agencies, be it NISA, you know, kind of Sheriff's Office, we're already in township, you know, for, for other calls, you know, assisting with calls, things of that nature. We had, we had a few mental health crisis calls, so, I mean, those were a few out there in domestics, you know, our basic ones, but the guy's handle was really good, and took care of those folks. They've all been trained in that de-escalation and, and mental health kind of calls, so everybody's went through that except I've got one officer left, and I'll send him this fall when that opens up again. You all know that, you all know I saw him go south. I'm short one body.
I was just going to ask you about stabbing.
My young officer, my young officer left me for Chiwasi, so.
How long was he on?
Seven months. But I understand, he lives up there, and it's closer to home, he drives a truck that gets four miles to the gallon, it's five dollars a gallon, so I understand the poor kids, just trying to, you know, do right by himself and his family. So I was approached to have a sponsor, and sponsor means take a person on as a new hire, pay their salary, and then pay their way through the academy. And I'm thinking in my mind, that's crazy, but looking at what the times are now, every student, every, I think thirty-one in this academy are sponsored by, by A, B, C. So everyone.
Everyone.
So for me to try and say, well, no, I'm not going to do that, I'm, I'm just living in the nineties.
Right.
How many months does the academy?
Seventeen weeks.
Is there, are there stipulations on that where they have to stay employed here?
See, I, you could try that, but I think M Coles put a, put a fash on that, Michigan law enforcement, they won't let you do that, so.
That might change the order.
But, but any.
Good, good to know.
Anyways, I got approached by a twenty-two-year-old person who said, yeah, you sponsor me, I'll go through the academy, I'll, I'll stay for two years, you know, guarantee you two years, I'm going. So I did the math, it's about twenty-two thousand dollars, I just sent somebody through the academy for that time, I'm going, okay, that's a terrible return on my investment.
Right.
So I got a reserve officer, Chapman Rome, who's been here for eight years as a reserve officer. This guy comes in on his days off, he's out there picking weeds in our flower bed, he's out there fixing my cars, he's vacuuming my cars. This guy is just, he's an outstanding guy, and, you know, I may not be the brightest guy in the room, but I go, Chad, would you consider the academy first sponsor you? Because I will get ten years plus out of that guy.
You will. I, I was fortunate enough to be a reserve with Chad, and he is extremely professional, he loves his community, I can't think of a better fit. And we all go through career changes in our life, and I think this is exciting for him, and he, like you said, he's been a reserve for eight years, he loves his community, he loves doing what he does as a reserve, and I'm excited for him to take that to that next level.
So working with the city manager, we were able to work it out and fit it into the budget, and he's passed the physical test, he passed everything, he's started last week, and he's, he's back in this week, and.
I love it.
He's just loving it, he's a paramilitary guy, so this stuff doesn't, you know, get to him or anything like that, but he, he's one of the most excited guys I see that wants to go to a police academy.
Oh, I can't even imagine, so.
So he started the academy already?
He did last week.
Yep.
Yep, so he's doing great, having lots of fun.
Which academy are you sending him through?
Lansing Community College.
Nice.
West campus.
We've had several reserves go through that program, it's a great program, can't speak highly of it. Yeah, yeah, so, excellent.
So yes, so we will.
January, February timeframe?
I'm sorry?
January, February.
He'll be on in December. He'll be on his, graduates a seventh, I believe, so he'll be right in the FTO and get after it, get going.
Okay.
So hopefully fully staffed, first of the year, yeah. So, and the final thing I want to leave you with is, and we don't get these very often, we get more of the exact opposite of these. I, I got an email from a citizen about one of our officers, and it's this short, I'll just want to read it to you kind of quick, because I think it, the meaning of it, you'll really appreciate it. And this, this gentle lady says, I'm sending this letter because I encountered one of your officers several months ago. I am a permanent resident of Michigan, and I travel an extensive amount for work. I was home visiting my parents while I had an occasion to encounter Officer Michael Pearl Number Four. I am a woman of color. Parentheses, I have been intending to send this note for months. Given what can often be fragment time in police slash community of color relations, it is with gratitude that I'd like to note that Officer Pearl is polite, professional, courteous, is courteous and thoughtful. I just wanted to thank Officer Pearl for being an outstanding public servant and law enforcement official. He is a type of officer that restores faith to community. I wanted to ensure that some, that someone know that, especially during these very trying times, Officer Pearl is an asset to Williamson PD and an outstanding representative to police, professional, efficient and helpful law enforcement. She has it, I would thank her.
Fantastic, that's great, thank you so much for sharing with us.
Our guys out there doing a great job.
What's the context there? Did he stop her for speeding?
She didn't, she didn't say it, and I didn't look up her name, and he, it was several months ago, and he didn't remember.
There wouldn't be any interaction, would be like, hi, how are you, let's have a cup of coffee.
Well, she could have had a flat tire, she could have.
Anything, really.
Yeah, I'm not sure, but most likely it was probably a traffic violation.
Sure.
It's my guess.
Wow.
So.
Very cool.
I, I appreciate you sharing that with us, that's great, because we know that our department serves this community very well, and it's, it's nice to get that type of feedback from our community, or from a guest in our community, so thank you so much.
You're welcome, Emma.
All right. Moving along, we have our Livingston County Department of Building and Safety Engineers reports, lots of new permits still being issued, lots of improved, home improvements, commercial improvements, so it's always great to see that in our community. If you do have any questions, please reach out to John, and he can get those answers for you. Going into our committee subcommittee reports, I'll start down here at the end. Noah, do you have anything to share?
I attended the planning commission meeting, and John can update, but we've talked a lot about the kayak, about proposals of the first reading, so nothing new, but it was a good meeting.
Excellent, great. Terry, anything from Parks?
Parks and Recreation, yes, lots happening. Lots of money flowing through, and lots of projects being taken care of, and lots of people being interested, so.
Okay, excellent.
Nothing, nothing bad, many things good.
Good, excellent. Tom, NISA?
We had a decent meeting, and started out with a few discussion items, just some financial stuff, they need to do some work on the parking lot there and some different things, but the big take from the meeting last week was NISA signed a resolution for Robert Ackerman, also known as Rusty, who was a longtime NISA member on the board, did a lot of other stuff for the Village of Weberville and some other places, I know he's actively involved all over, even up till very recently, he's been battling cancer as of late. So we got this resolution passed last week, unfortunately Rusty passed away this week, so condolences to his family and, and everybody that, that he interacted with, but that was kind of the big take from the meeting.
Excellent, thanks for sharing, and our thoughts and condolences go out to his family, appreciate that. We talked about Z V A a little bit, anything else you want to share?
The only item we had for Z V A was what we addressed on the agenda earlier.
Okay.
Wow.
All right, and Brandon, what would you like to share with us?
The planning, I was canceled last week, so we don't have a minute, so I got nothing.
All right, well, good, we'll get done here so you can go home and spend a couple more nights with the family before you add yourself on. All right, we have another opportunity for audience participation with five-minute